Okay, I call to order the Bedford Township Planning Commission regular meeting for February 22nd, 2023. We will start with the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three, roll call, Mr. Lampkowski, please. Caught off guard?
I didn't think about roll call. All right, Andrews.
Here.
Helm.
Here.
Mahoney.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Diner.
Hi.
Lampkowski here, Crowe Rutt.
Here. Thank you very much. Yep. Item number four on the agenda, looking for approval of the agenda. Motion to approve the agenda is submitted. Moved and supported. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Agenda is now approved. Item number five, approval of the minutes of February 8th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I have one, or actually two changes. This is my fault, Katrina. I'm not good verbalizer. But on page three, last paragraph, toward the end, where it says, can we ban that sign by Laura Genovich referencing which sign regulations are enforceable? Quantitative versus qualitative signage regulations and the inability to legally regulate some signs and others. The gist of the article is to recognize ordinances that are content-based versus content-neutral. That's what I meant to say. And then, two pages later, on the last page, I had submitted that sign ordinances should be written to regulate size, quantity, location, not by content, which is what our sign ordinances are, by definition, in my opinion. That's it.
Jody, do you have a... Still confused?
Can you say that, what you mean again?
Sure.
On page one.
Okay, the first one or the second?
The second.
Okay. It says, Mahoney spoke on updating the regulations to focus more on the size regulations in certain districts, and due to legal recourse, may desire to loosen restrictions. What I should have said is sign ordinances should be written to regulate size, quantity, location, not by content. Just want to clarify it. It's kind of an important point.
We'll get it amended. And we'll need a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Motion to approve the minutes of the February 20... I'm sorry, the February 8th, 2023 meeting as amended.
Second.
Moved and supported. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed.
Second that? Okay, who? Ron or Joe?
They both kind of... Mr. Fritz?
Mr. Fritz.
Item number six, public comment. Seeing that there are no attendees this evening, we'll move on to item number seven. Old Business 7A, request for a recommendation to the Township Board on the amendments and all updates within the Capital Improvement Plan, including allocation to the 2024 fiscal year budget. Jody.
Okay. In close in the packet, you will find the draft of the proposed amendments to the Capital Improvement Plan. The CIP is prepared under the direction and authority of the Township Planning Commission by direction of the Township Planning Act. I requested that you review the improvement plan, assets and summary request sheet for a recommendation to the Township Board for allocation for the 2024 budget year, fiscal budget year, which is coming up in... We'll be getting that information beginning in March, and then it will go to the Township Board for determination. You'll see the table of contents page. It restarts with the executive summary, the Township Capital Improvement Projects, Organization of Bedford Township Capital Improvement Plan, the CI projects for consideration, project description form, and then remainder pages are the list of the assets. I'm going to quickly read through this for the public, and then if anybody has any questions, either get myself or Mr. Crowe Rutt's attention, and we can address them as we go along. In the overview, this Bedford Township Capital Improvement Plan outlines the schedule of necessary expenditures associated with maintaining and improving the capital assets responsible for and owned by Bedford Township. The CIP does not comprise of all capital expenditures for the township, but seeks to include all known physical assets which need to be addressed by periodic and regular attention for maintenance. Examples of capital assets for Bedford Township Board and Bedford Township Planning Commission need to budget for and physically address our basic facility services and installations needed for functioning, operation, recreation, and transportation of and in the Bedford community. To qualify to be considered into the CIP, a project must be met the following criteria: consistent with the adopted and current master plan, meet a state or federal requirement, a township-approved policy, and have a minimum project cost of $5,000. The CIP is prepared under the direction and authority of the Bedford Township Planning Commission by direction of the Township Planning Act. The Michigan Planning Enable Act of 2008 requires a capital improvement program for any Michigan township which owns and/or operates a water supply or sewage disposal system. As Bedford Township owns a sanitary sewer plant, adopting and annually and updating a capital improvement plan is required by state law. Additional CIP documents that may be provided or amended from time to time in the future will be reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission and submitted to the Township Board to encourage future decisions and development regarding the implementation of the Bedford Township Master Plan. The CIP shall be for a six-year term funded by the Bedford Township Board through their fiscal year budget, July 1st through June 30th each year. Availability of funds must be given priority in order to be responsible for the capital improvement and continued maintenance of the township's capital assets. Sufficient and responsible budgeting must be in place annually to meet the ongoing needs of the CIP. Project funding shall be considered and held in reserve in advance of the proposed project year in order for the projects to be viable in the year projected in the plan. Project needs and timing of projects to be included in the CIP are determined by overall assessment of physical facilities proposed submitted by individual departments annually. Prioritization of projects and needs is adopted by the Planning Commission, submitted to, reviewed, and approved by the Township Board. The CIP is a form of strategic planning that allows the Bedford Township community to establish a maintenance and/or construction schedule for priority activities in our capital assets. Definitions for project rating: essential, urgent, high-priority projects that should be done if at all possible; desirable, high-priority, project that should be done as funding becomes available; acceptable, worthwhile project to be considered if funding is or becomes available. Project rating shall be addressed each year to determine the need of importance to assess deterioration. The original project listing may be rearranged as needed to fund... Due to funding or the current need that may not have been known or assessed in previous years. Bedford Township shall use the process as follows. Each department head will meet annually with the Planning Commission for their responsible items listed in the CIP. Beginning in January but no later than February, the department heads will meet to discuss their input on the capital improvement project or projects they would like to see that would benefit the department and/or improve their ability to enhance or maintain their effort to serve the public. A list of each department's needs shall be established within an estimated scope of the needs. If the department heads have new and innovative proposals, they shall present only those needs, projects, or ideas for improvement that they have researched and known to have been successful in our communities in their area of expertise. If the need is improving an outdated or inefficient vehicle or equipment, the request should be accompanied by data and information designated the cost savings for upgrading. In addition, there may be a need to hire a professional in the field of construction or development to determine the project costs. No project engineering cost shall be incurred until the project is approved and recommended by the Planning Commission and further approved by the Township Board for that year. The department heads will present to the Planning Commission the list of projects requested by each department. The Planning Commission will discuss and determine the ranking for each project. Rating the project is extremely important toward determining the CIP budget for the impending year. The CIP budget shall be determined each year by priority. Through the CIP is a six-year... Though the CIP is a six-year plan, it shall be reviewed each year based on priority. If a project is planned two or three years out and it becomes severely deteriorated in less time, the Planning Commission must act accordingly to the current priority. Project selection may be determined by the amount of money available for spending. Some projects will require building a fund over several years. Should an outside professional be needed to determine costs, a request to the Township Board for recommendation and/or approval is required. A capital improvement plan has two components: a capital improvement budget and a capital project plan. The capital improvement budget is the upcoming year's spending plan, and the capital project plan explains the projects that have been submitted for review and approval. In order to determine the projects to be recommended and approved for the CIP each year, there must be an organization and data facts for reviewing members to rely on for their decisions. The Planning Commission must provide the following information for review to be provided on the summary request from heads of departments for the six-year capital project plan: project rating, whether it's essential, desirable, or acceptable; ranking, project name, project type, anticipated lifespan, replacement year, total cost of the project, proposed allocation each year, and funding requirements. And the funding requirements are whether you're going to fully respond on the CIP, rely on the CIP, get a bank loan, grant, bonding, combination of funds, et cetera. Due to the fact, Bedford Township CIP shall include the capital improvements of each department and possibly other budgeted needs, i.e. roads, buildings, purchase of property. The CIP shall be divided into separate pages for listed project type. Each page shall provide department title and brief description of the project, the requested and/or proposed scheduling, a thorough narrative assessment and justification, anticipated lifespan, project rating, project projected cost information to complete the project. In addition, to departments submitting the request to be included in the CIP, the Planning Commission organizing the plan each year, there must be a capital improvement budget determined and allocated each year. The Bedford Township Board must determine the amount of dollars from their annual revenue that shall be added to the CIP each year. The amount must be a resolution added to each year to prevent ignoring the responsibility to build the Township Improvement Revolving Fund for long-term projects or failing to have the funding for projects that are in the future. The capital improvement budget shall list all projects scheduled to be funded in the upcoming fiscal year as well as projects completed with the TRF. Township Improvement Revolving Fund. Voting to accept the capital improvement budget does not mean the Township Board approves all projects that the budget may contain. Acceptance merely acknowledges the board members agree that these projects represent a reasonable list of future needs of the township. The approval of the annual budget, separate from the capital improvement budget, itemizes the revenue collected for municipal spending during the fiscal year. This includes the daily operation expenses for the township. The projects included in the CIP are not directly included in the township's annual budget. It is necessary to understand the link between the CIP and the TRF and the master plan. The Township Board must understand the fiscal year's planning is done to be sure funding is available for needs relating to the current fiscal year. The TRF funding is needed to set aside funding for the six-year, long-range capital improvement needs to responsibly maintain and purchase projects along beyond the current fiscal year. You'll see the next page is the CIP. Oh, I'm sorry. Does anybody have any comments or questions or any further input on the actual language of the plan?
Mr. Stenner.
Just the one comment. When it goes, let me find the right page here. Page two talks about the department heads shall meet annually. Get it for general submission annually of major projects. But it seems to me that they should meet no less than quarterly, only for the fact that, you know, they all out of sight, out of mind, and it may be on the list, and if somebody's not following it on a regular basis, nobody's going to know whether the department heads really following through with what that commitment's supposed to be, so...
Well, I think once the idea was, when we had our meetings, was the fact that once we get the projects determined of what we're looking at, the project heads' determinations are to advise the commission should something become that was actually determined to be essential. If that was more desirable or needed more urgent attention, their job is, once we get the spreadsheet, that's where we're already allocating money from, their job is then to determine whether it's essential or desirable. The biggest thing they're going to come back for is if they need a change or the next year out. So I guess maybe I don't understand the question.
Basically, to make sure that the project... Let's just say that there's two or three items on the CIP for this fiscal year, and they don't start for... Like, the first one doesn't start for seven months. You get to seven months, and all of a sudden, everybody says, "Oh, we've got this project that was supposed to have been started. Why hasn't it happened?" So if nobody's following through on a regular basis, ensure that that department head, yes, should be responsible for it, but if they're not following through with it, which could happen, I just think that it'd be good for department heads to just... You know, so just get around the table for 30 minutes and just make sure that everybody's on track.
Well, it's going to come back to the Planning Commission quarterly. Every... At least every six months, you'll be seeing this come back because you're going to have to determine as a commission what is the essential ones that have to be looked at. And until you make that decision of what we're going to... That's where we're going to be looking at tonight. When you see the spreadsheet of the assets, you're going to have to make a determination of what you're going to look at as essential right now because we have to get it back to the Township Board for them to make a determination. I mean, if you... Once you see the spreadsheet broke down, I mean, I don't have the parks in there yet, but we're already at over $700,000. Well, we know that the Township Board is not going to allocate $700,000 for 2024, but we need to get that downsized. Planning Commission's job is to get the projects downsized of what... Right now, we're only going by years. For the first year, the heads of departments are going to have to do more work because they're going to have to be the ones telling us if this is going to be due in 2025 or can we push it out to 2028? But we have to at least have some kind of allocation set aside. But I believe my intention is to bring it back to the Planning Commission and at least take a look at it, at least every... I mean, I can put it on any agenda, and if we make no changes to it, it doesn't have to go back to the Township Board. And keep in mind, it is a working document. If anybody comes before the six months comes up and says, hey, the roof on the maintenance building needs to be repaired, well, we all know that the process of the Township Board has come to you as a CIP, present what they're requesting. Maybe they said it was going to be two years out, but now we need it replaced in 2024. They'll come, present their case, say what the reasonings are, and then it has to go to the Township Board. But then they also have to get quotes because we need to have at least three bids for the Township Board to say that, yes, they can move forward with that project.
So basically, what I'm saying, though, if we don't do something differently where people get their heads together, the burden's going to be stuck on you and your department. That's the problem because you're going to be the one to have to review, and then you're going to have to chase somebody down and say, "This project's supposed to be starting in, you know, three weeks or four weeks. What have you done?" And then when you find out nothing was done, then it pushes it back on you. So I'm just saying that there's got to be some accountability to these department heads. You can't just throw something on a list and then just say, okay, it's everybody else's responsibility to take care of it.
Mr. Stenner. That came up... Mr. Mahoney brought that up during our discussion as well. Like, how do we hold folks accountable for exactly what you're saying? And some of this, I mean, the reality is, once... I guess some of the discussion that we had was, once the plan gets approved, you have the projects identified, the ranking identified, the schedule identified, that if people don't follow through, a department head just kind of kicks back and, you know, doesn't do anything, well, his projects or her projects won't get funded. They won't happen. They'll just kind of sit there and hopefully with an awareness of, hey, I better be more involved, or my projects aren't going to get funded, that'll start to register, and people will get more engaged as we go through this.
I don't want... I don't want to see that happen, though, because if it's something that really, really needs to be done...
Well, keep in mind, those department heads are under the elected officials. Someone always should be overseeing them as the elected official, each department, whether it's building and grounds, whether it's the planning department, the treasures department, the park board, they are all overseen by one of the elected officials. And I know that was part of our discussion in the meeting we had. And I don't have a problem if the desire of the commission is to change that language. I know we did speak about it, but I feel that the commission is going to give direction at the meeting and say, these items are coming up in 20... When I bring it back in, say, September, and you... The commission says, these projects are coming up for 2024, then those department heads need... The elected officials need to tell their department heads, these are the projects that you have. I need an update where this is at, no later than January because if we're spending the money, we need to get it allocated. But the commission, by all means, have discussion, and then if we need it changed, I just... I need direction to get it changed before I take it to the Township Board.
So, Mr. Stenner, on page two, then, where it says Bedford Township shall use the process as follows, meet annually with the Planning Commission. Is that where you're suggesting making that quarterly?
Yes.
So have the planning heads come to the Planning Commission and give an update on their projects?
Right. And the thing is, I mean, I don't want to sit here and beat a dead horse, but I've been around here long enough. I know how things get put on the back burner, and I just don't want to see that happen, especially when we've got... We do have a lot of important projects, and, you know, Tom, you've known for how many years? I mean, you've been a huge proponent of this ever since you were chairing the Planning Commission 15 years ago.
A couple of years ago.
So, again, I think this board is really engaged to want to see this happen. I just don't want to have any surprises on anybody.
So, nothing would stop a planning or a department head from wanting to come in and talk to us at any time, right?
Right.
They could get on the agenda if they wanted to.
If they... Especially if... Even if they come quarterly, if something becomes more of a priority, they're going to have to come and present it, so...
That we could change to say at least annually.
Minimum.
A minimum of annually.
Well, then, if you go minimum annually, it still doesn't cover what I was saying.
Yeah. I mean, my fear is, if you say quarterly, what happens if they don't come in?
Or if they keep coming in with needs every other week? It just blows the whole idea of having a plan.
It's not even new needs because if they've got a true need, they can come up with a new need anytime if it's a true need. But I'm talking about the follow-through with the things that we've already said we need, things we're approving that we need, and then there's no follow-through to make sure it's actually being taken care of.
Mr. Chairman. To follow up on that, can you walk me through something that is in the current budget needs? Seven months into the fiscal year, a $40,000 truck needs to be purchased. How does it work? Does... It should be on this list, right?
It doesn't mean it's been fully allocated, correct? If it's something that comes... Say, we've only put $20,000 for one year, and they allocated it out for five years, and we've allocated $20,000 for the budget year, and the next budget year, we did another 20.
It's on this year's budget, it's priority one, and they come in and they say, oh, it's time to replace this truck. They still have to go to the Township Board, and they could say, hey, it's in the CIP, it's been approved.
They have to come to you, and they have to say, the truck broke down, we need to get it replaced. We have this one where we've got an idea that it's in our price range. This is what we want to spend. We need to buy it within 30 days or else they're going to sell it. You make a recommendation on that item to be allocated from the CIP. You let the Township Board know how much money has already been allocated. Where are we getting the rest of the funds? And that's the department head's job to say, well, I'm going to request to the Township Board, I either use the general fund, or I've got a grant, or I've gone and we're going to get a loan. And then they present it to the Township Board as what their request is, by your recommendation, whether it be, yes, we need to get this vehicle replaced, and we need to move forward with it as soon as possible.
I mean, at this point, we've already approved it, and I already gave it a number-one ranking at the annual update. Seven months later...
However, if you only allocated $20,000, then they have to request the rest of the money to either be spent from the CIP. Maybe they need to prioritize the other items and move them down to less essential and say, well, I have this item that was $10,000 that's been allocated, I'm going to move that to the truck. And now I've got $30,000. I only need to borrow $10,000 out of the general fund when I present it to the Township Board. Each department can move their own funding if they need be. If they come in and they think something's going to be need replaced in two years, and they make that a priority two, and then they see that, no, we can get another year out of it, if they need to use that funding that was allocated for that, then they have to remember when they come back, they may not have that total allocation for the next item that's on their priority list. But it's going to be determined by what is moved over for each allocation year of a priority. And I know we're not at that point, so it's hard to actually see that process, but I think by the end of next year, I think we will have, whether a priority list, we're going to have the ranking list, and we're going to have those because I think the first year is when we're going to need the most input. Because what I was going to add is, such as the sewer treatment plant. We allocate money for that every year, and it has its own fund. But we still have to allocate. It's going to be increased this year. They're asking for more of a funding from the township for the sewer treatment plant, which is under the maintenance of the Monroe County drain commission. And having said that, should we not need that money, we still have to allocate for it. So I don't think that Ms. Yanasek needs to come every meeting, and... That's what I was going to say about the annual. I don't think she needs to come and present her case for the sewer treatment plant because we have to have that. That's why we have to have the CIP. So I think that there are certain things, when we start saying that the heads have to come to the meeting, there are certain allocations within the budget that are not going to need to have any representation annually or even quarterly. So I think we need to be careful on that requiring it unless maybe they have an item that needs to be addressed. I was just using the sewer treatment because it's pretty straightforward on the allocation.
So Parks Department has a $40,000 truck that they put on at the annual... Putting this together, the first meeting of the year. And then seven months in, they determine, now's the time we need this truck. The last one broke down, it's beyond repair. Do they have to come back to the Planning Commission, or do they go right to the board?
They have to come to you first, and they have to fill out that form and all the... Why they're requesting it now. They have to have permission from the Planning Commission to spend the money, and then the Township Board has to approve it. Every item has to come back. That's why it's under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. You have to give... You're doing the work, so when the Township Board gets it, they say, oh, this is where the priorities are. And then when they're doing the budget for the year, they say, okay, we're going to allocate this much each year for this item. But if it comes that it has to be replaced sooner, the head of the department has to more or less sell the item that, yes, I'm going... I need it, and we need to have it updated and corrected now.
So, Jody, if I understood you earlier, each department head reports to an elected official. So to Mr. Stenner's point of following up, you know, finger on the pulse, are the department heads doing what they're supposed to be doing, what was allocated, what was planned? I would think that would fall on the elected official to meet with the department heads and make it happen.
And I'm going to be honest, I'm going to go to those department heads if I don't get something that I need to bring to you because my job is to present it to the commission and to give you guys as much information as I can obtain. And if I can't obtain it and you can't make a decision, then it's going to fall back on those overseeing elected officials that oversee those departments. And having said that, I know those positions change, but so does the commission, so we all have to continue to work together. And I think that, once we get the plan and can actually see the project rating and the... Ranking?
Ranking and rating.
I've been messing up every time. I did in the whole... Once we get the ranking and the rating, I think it'll be... It will be easier to allocate and move the items what we're looking at for each year.
Are we going to be kept in tune with the TRF account balance?
Absolutely. That's public knowledge. Anybody can check that.
I know, but you're going to provide it to everybody on the commission? Because we're going to need to know budget information if we're going to be approved. we're going to need to know budget information if we're going to be approving.
Well, you'll need to know what the TURF balance is because you can't spend more than what's in there.
Exactly, yeah.
Absolutely. And currently, right now, in the Township Improvement Revolving Fund is $327,255.20 and that has been, what has been allocated for the last two years with the idea of keeping projects moving forward. I do have the information, once we get moving forward, on the Road Capital Improvement Fund and the Sewer O&M Fund where those are their own funds. However, the money has to go, it still has to be part of the CIP, but those fundings will then, when we allocate through the budget of the fiscal year, you will see the fund and the CIP is showing it. Because when they request it from the CIP, we know that we have to work with the county on the sewer treatment plant. Every year, we give them $189,000 and they are asking for an increase. So you'll see when I get to the spreadsheet, I've upped that to 200,000 in the CIP. The budget then will then, when it goes to the township board, they will say, we've got this much in the Sewer O&M Fund, but we need to still add 20,000 into the CIP to cover the difference that the county wants to balance out that annual fiscal year because we know that's annually.
Of that 327,000, how much is already earmarked for projects? Do you know?
I know as much as you do.
Okay.
They're going to look at the balance when we go for the 2024 budget right now.
Okay.
I don't believe anything right now has been allocated. That was the balance of 131 to 23.
Any additional questions before Jody moves on to the spreadsheet? Okay, Jody?
I'm going to go off the one that was provided for tonight. As I said before, I didn't speak with Mr. Crowe Redd as the chair, and we felt that maybe it would be a little bit easier. We'll start with the election equipment first because I think this one kind of balances itself out. Ms. Hirschberger oversees the election equipment, she is the department head, and then you'll see the items listed for the project name. A lot of those are really outdated already. Original cost, you can see even in the first item, which was originally purchased in 2004, original cost was around $1,700, lifespan about 10 years. They have not been replaced. She replaces those things as needed, but I do believe we should allocate some funding for elections because if she needs it or the state changes the requirements, she has to come and purchase them. So she's estimated the cost to increase to approximately 5,000. So if you look, I've, and keep in mind, this is allocations that we've done as a planning department because we are just all learning this process and getting everybody involved to know what their responsibilities are. So if you have any changes or you have a question of the allocation, by all means, please just let me know. So you see for the 5,000, we've allocated the total 5,000 because it was purchased in 2004, a lifespan of 10 years. They probably will need to be replaced sooner than later. So then, of course, then it goes on from 25 till 29, 2029, no other allocation for that. The next one is the laptops, purchased in 19, have a lifespan of approximately five years. They were 11,000, she's increased that to 15. So probably in two years, she's going to need to buy some new laptops. So we've estimated that out at 7,500 for '24 and 7,500 for '25, and then you see it allocates off. So if you want to take a look at that spreadsheet and let me know if you have any, I did highlight at the bottom for 2024 allocation of 27,300 for the items that would be allocated for 2024, if the desire is to move all of those items to the spreadsheet for the township board to take a look at for allocation. And then you can see the breakdown, it goes from 27,300 to 22,300, down to 14,000 in 2026. 2027 would be 14,800, '28 would be 11,000, and '29 would be 10,000. Now, keep in mind, if she adds anything, takes anything off, then those would be changed because it is a working document and some of her assets may change for the election.
Are you going to run this, are you going to run this CIP the same as our fiscal year or just?
Goes with the fiscal year budget.
Okay, so '24 is really, '23, '24, '24, '25, so on.
Well, when Bob sends out the budget, it says budget year for 2024. So I'm trying to keep it in conjunction with what he has as documents as the finance manager.
Basically, that number is really the back end year of the fiscal.
When, when you, when the budget goes in March for the June 1st, it's going, or July 1st, it's going to be 2024 budget year. So when we start reviewing it in the next week, I believe it will be coming out, that that will be for 2024 budget fiscal year.
So right now, Jody, everything that's listed on here for 2024 would be included, recommended to the board for inclusion in the budget?
Except the items that we do not have any money allocated for. If you look at.
Correct, yeah.
The tabulators, she has 2018, a 20-year lifespan. So then that would probably be added maybe in 2026.
Sure.
To start allocating money.
The 27,3 total that you have there.
Is for 2024 for the elections. Should that be the desire of the commission? If you want to change anything, take anything off, you can add things that we have that we did not allocate. We kind of just looked at it because we're already two years in with the original adoption. So we're always looking at six years out. If there are any changes, and keep in mind, your recommendation is a total number to the township board, and then they're going to allocate their money for the budget, and then the monies they have extra after the budget is determined, then they'll make it the determination of moving projects forward. That's why I didn't want to get into the ranking and the rating tonight because until we know the funding, we can't really say that you can have this in 2024 if we don't have the monies.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I'll kind of just scroll through the next ones and if anybody has any inputs, take a look at them. I know it makes it a lot easier since everybody has the screen in front of them. So the next item is going to be cemeteries, that is under Ms. Hirschberger as the clerk. We kind of have that broke down in the same direction. Obviously, I am not sure about, you know, you have the first one, I'll kind of just stick with the first item to break it down. You have pave and seal two parking lots. 2015 was when they were last done, lifespan of 10, so 2025, we may want to start allocating some monies. We put all the 35,000 in there because that's an estimate and we know cost of everything has gone up. So that can be allocated out if you want to allocate half for '24 and half for '25. I mean, if you're looking at just the 5,000 for the fences, I did speak and with Ms. Hirschberger, and I do believe those fences and that are in need of some repair, but of course, without the CIP and the funding allocated, those fences have gone to some deterioration. So you'll see that a lot of the signs have still some lifespan left in speaking with Ms. Hirschberger. So those are the items. And if you look, if we, if we allocate the full 35,000 to be able to park, do the parking lots, a pave and seal, we're up to 50,000 just in 2024 unless we want to break that down into separate from '24 to '25.
Any comments on that?
Real quick, what is frost remover?
Pardon me?
Frost remover, what is that?
I have no idea. I just know it's part of, the assets list came, I will be honest, and that I, keep in mind, I don't have the park board yet. Unfortunately, I was unaware that the park board does, no longer has their own funding. They are part of the general fund, so they have to be included. I have spoke to one of the park board representatives and she is working on the document, so I'm hoping to have at least her input back before going to the township board. I'm not sure, this is items that were, we worked hard with the finance manager and Ms. Hirschberger on getting as many assets as we could, and then we broke it down and I believe the frost remover means that it's the cemeteries. Maybe it's something they use to make the paths accessible if someone's visiting or I'm not sure.
The ground easier to dig.
Maybe the ground easier to dig. Good call. There you go. Thank you. So any thoughts on the cemeteries? Otherwise, what we have is what we're going to present as total for the township board to take a look at. And we can go back to anything if anybody, once we get farther in. Next one is going to be the police cars. You will see that they say three to five years. We have not allocated only for the 2020 of the substation parking lot. Says it's going to last, it should have been replaced in 2023, and I know that there has been discussions of doing repaving at the township hall. But we look at that, we still allocated that out for three years of 5,000 each year. So for the police right now, we're looking at 5,000. Keep in mind, moving forward, we will have to start adding the cars as replacement.
Only one direction, it doesn't swivel, so it keeps dropping down.
Any comments on the police? Okay.
Okay.
Under the sewer treatment plant, you'll see that I have notated it's under Ms. Janicek as the treasurer. It's maintenance yearly at 188,000 to the county, and they are seeking an increase. So you will see I have budgeted for 2024, 200,000. Keep in mind, that does have its own funding, but we will need to increase at least 20,000 into the CIP to cover any difference of the cost that's not already allocated within the fund. That one's pretty straightforward. Buildings and grounds. The department head is going to be the supervisors department and with the maintenance department. You will see we have allocated quite a bit for the maintenance department. They have a lot of items that are very much outdated. I mean, they have a mower that's 10 years old from 1995. Replacement cost on that is about 85,000. So we have allocated quite a bit for them to, at least, those are going to be our big ticket items, I believe, with the buildings and the maintenance of the grounds. And they do have a lot of larger, more expensive vehicles that will need to be, most of them are going to need to be updated. I think there are a few that were from 2020, but I believe that, you know, you have the salt spreaders and those were in 2020, they last approximately five years, and we are greeting close to 2025. So we did allocate 3,500 for each of those for the next two years. Once we get a better idea of where we're at with vehicles, I know they just purchased a new dump truck, but I believe that I, you'll see that we, with the 2004 dump truck, we allocated that out, and I believe that, I'm not sure which one, I think it might have been the 1995 dump truck that was replaced. And you see, I have no money allocated for that. But the other one, I think we need to start allocating, it's a 2004, they say it lasts roughly 10 years. We've obviously gotten our monies out of that. So allocating for the maintenance department and the buildings and grounds is going to always probably be the high-end allocation. So if you can take a look at that and see, let me know if you have any inputs, any changes or any comments.
So Jody, the dump truck, and maybe you just talked about this, 1995 dump truck, 2024 replacement, and there's nothing allocated.
I believe that's the one the township board just recently approved, and I think they, it was like 100, and that's why you'll see it says 115,000 to replace it because I believe it was averaged right now at about 116,000 that it cost at the board meeting that was approved. So I believe the new one is going to replace that 1995, and I believe it's a 2023 dump truck.
So one thing we talked about on the committee when we were generating this was to, this is an asset list of everything greater than 5,000 in value. So if there's nothing allocated, it's still going to stay on this list?
Absolutely.
We'll always be able to see?
Absolutely. That's why I, I know we had talked at the meeting, and that is why we have this list, and then we're going to downsize it to what's only being allocated for 2024 onto the list within the CIP. So when it goes to the township board, they don't, if they want to look over all the assets, they can, but that, this list within the CIP is what we're focusing on. Then next year, the items that will remain for 2024 will stay on there, that are still allocated for 2025, and then it will be updated to 2025 allocation. So I, this list will always remain and updated. This is the list we can change and play around with. The list that goes within the CIP is going to be what we're going to present to the township board for allocation.
One question on the habitat security system?
Yes.
Is that, what's happening there? Is that like a brand new system to replace the current one?
I think the township is looking at updating the entire security system. We added it in for this year of the budget for the CIP because I believe it is being budgeted out with the current system. I believe they're upgrading cameras and we see the technology increasing even in the boardroom. So I believe some of these items, the township board will be able to give a better idea of a time span because if we've updated it, and you'll see it says, when it's due is in 2023. So that allocation may be able to be spent out 10 more years if it is included. We included it because it said 2023, but then I think the timeframe, the township board is updating the security system at this time and maybe.
So if it's being replaced currently, that's coming out of the budget now, why would we allocate it for next year?
Because at first I didn't know it was being allocated. I didn't know that it was all being, I didn't know the entire security system was being updated, and then they started installing cameras.
Okay.
Now I assume that it's all security. Am I correct, Mr. Steiner?
It's cameras, all security.
So that should be pulled out of next year?
If that is the case, yes.
This year?
It will most likely come out of that, that line item and be moved out.
Okay. I have removed that. You should see it updated.
Yep. Thank you.
They're, they're real close on it, but there was discussion over the cameras and the resolution and, long story short, the company came back and they, I guess, I think Trudy's the one that made the comment that they're giving is actually better camera equipment than we first said because it, it all had to do with pricing. Some of the pricing was just way out there, so.
Okay. So I have updated that. That went down to 205,400. Any other changes or comments?
So two questions there on the 1990 backhoe and 2004 dump truck. The replacement is '25 and '23, but we're allocating it out quite a bit further?
I have no update that those are going to need replaced, so I am at least allocating something to at least have, if they, if they determine they need to have that replaced and they come to the town, to the planning commission and say the backhoe needs to replace, we'll at least have 20,000 of 2024 at least put aside for them if they need it. And the other one for the 2004 dump truck, we did 30,000 because I'm not aware of where those are. Like I said, we just, our basic thing was when we worked with the heads, and I believe Pat and Tom, Pat and Paul both worked on these together with Al, the deputy supervisor and the supervisor, to at least get us a list of all the equipment they had. So it, I felt that we needed to at least allocate something. I'm not aware of anything being wrong with those vehicles, but.
So moving forward, the process is if, if that becomes essential and, you know, we adjust.
Yes.
Increase the allocation.
And moving forward, if that would become essential and they think that it's not going to last until 2026, then we would move that other 20 or 30,000 till next year's budget allocation. We would definitely want to increase it to 40,000 for the backhoe and 60,000 for the dump truck, should they feel that that might become more of a desirable essential repair, replacement.
Any additional questions on?
And keep in mind, these are not for maintenance purposes. If a lawnmower, we did have this long discussion, if a lawnmower breaks, we need to have the lawns cut. So the lawn mower will be replaced if it need be without, if the township board approves it without using the CIP funding because we still have to keep functioning as a township. These are for long-term spreading the larger vehicles. If there's money allocated for the lawnmower, absolutely come to get that money from the CIP instead of drawing it all from the general fund because it's going to be allocated for that.
And it, you know, obviously, there's going to be cases where it's going to be already budgeted anyway in the general fund.
Correct.
So they're, they're not going to necessarily have to come to the CIP. So we, you know, for the next couple of years, we've got a lot of balancing act between the CIP, the TURF, the general fund, ARPA funds, so it'll be an interesting combination.
Yes, yes. So on to, any more comments on that? Buildings and grounds? Okay, on to land improvements. I believe that you will see that the front parking lot, I believe that there, we're looking at a lifespan of 20 years, so 2030. Sidewalk maintenance on Lewis Avenue, 2035. So we did allocate, even though that says replacement year of 2030. So we did allocate, even though that says replacement year of 2030 for the front parking lot, we allocated the 25,000 because I believe they are looking at doing maintenance and repair at the township hall for the parking lot.
Well, if it was constructed in 2005, a lifespan of 20 years would land you in 2025. Is that correct? Is that a 2030? It's projected-
Okay, yep. Maybe that we, 2025. All right, I updated it. Thank you.
Same with the next one? Sidewalk maintenance, Lewis should be 20-
That's Lewis Avenue. I believe we own some sidewalks on Lewis Avenue.
So 20 years from-
And I, you know, I think that when we talked with the deputy supervisor, I don't believe those need maintenance and repair right now. But we can, I will definitely update it as to the 2025 to show that 20 years out. And we allocated that out for two years of just the 5,000, or the 2024 to show the 5,000 of what is allocated. And that could be my error of moving the numbers. We quickly made this spreadsheet today.
Sorry, that's my fault.
No, it's not your fault. I'm just saying we quickly, so I may have added those numbers in there and-
So Jody, is that a 5,000 annual repairing?
Annual 5,000, we should budget every year.
So should we just put that all the way across? Thank you.
And then the front parking lot paving and maintenance. The reason we allocate for that yearly is because we want to make sure that the funding is there should we have to do even just crack and seal. Any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, I'm going back to the, what's already been earmarked or saved for this, say, the first project. It wouldn't be an even amount of 5,000. Is there already money saved up? And then we'll add 5,000 per year after that? So will we get an updated sheet at some point? Will this be updated?
Updated sheet for?
What's already been allocated for such a project? Because we've already probably already saved money for a lot of these.
I can't say what the monies were allocated for that's already in the TRF because that money was, they had to move money with the budget. It's not actually defined as allocation. But once it goes, this goes to the township board, that 300,000 that's in there will be, started to be allocated off of what this project sheet is going to give them. The money that's in there now is, was allocated as the fact we had the CIP and we had no asset really list or what projects needed to be replaced with it.
So in the TRF account that Bob has, there's nothing specified where it's just a pool?
Not that I'm aware of.
Interesting.
Now, once it, once the money's over into the account and these numbers here, once we do start an actual project, if it's 10,000, it comes in at 8,000, then obviously that money will just build back up into that particular line item. Or it may be readjusted into another item within that department.
Correct.
If they feel the need might, you know, have to move it to a different, different one. Just real quick, Jody, before you flip to the next one, we did have a sheet in between here that was building and grounds, the HVAC, township hall and roof township hall. Or was that at the bottom of the, okay, it's at the bottom of the other one?
Yeah.
It was just on a separate sheet?
Yeah. We tried to get it so it would show up all as once for the meeting.
Okay. One last comment here, Jody. The sidewalk maintenance on Lewis. If that's just like we just added it, it's annual maintenance, right? Each year 5,000, it's not a replacement, it's just maintenance.
Correct.
I would suggest the lifespan then, just similar to the last two lines, just change that to zero, the lifespan. And then replacement year would be yearly?
You'd probably almost have to do a separate line item if you're talking about replacement then.
Right, yep.
So one's a maintenance item, the other one's a replacement item.
You got it, yep. Thank you.
Updated.
Is this Excel, by the way?
Pardon me?
It's Excel.
Okay, so next item is going to be parks. You'll see we have nothing updated. I am working with her. And if you have any input, you'll see Promley Park, the pavilion. We have the restrooms at Promley Park, Car Park Pavilion, community center at Car Park, the garage at Car Park. White Park has restrooms, White Park has the pavilion. Samaria Park has a pavilion. There's two pavilions, one on one property and one on the other, the Banner Oak School. And then there is vacant land of, on Samaria Road. I don't know the value of that. We have no structures on that property.
Should we put water fountains on this list?
Water fountains? I believe that's being part of the ARPA.
But it's still something that may have to be replaced in 20 years.
Well, until they're installed, we can't, we're not going to add them. Once the park board updates this and they come back with other items, because you'll see there's some on the baseball field, I believe is under, some of the things are under 3B baseball. And I'm not aware of all of that, but I do know that some of the things at White Park are under the 3B baseball to maintain and that. So those will not be included as a township. And you'll see that even on other local structures of the township are under other jurisdictions.
The ARPA, the ARPA funds that they allocated was 50,000 for the water fountains. And they're going to be the concrete block style.
Okay, any other things on the parks? I know there's not much information there, but I'm hoping when I bring it back in, we'll have a better idea when it goes to the township board. She is working. Mrs. Carol, Carol Laurie is working on that. You'll see roads. We are not spending money for the roundabout out of what has not been, I think, allocated already. The widening of Secor Road, I think, is being part of a grant right now. And then secondary roads. I did speak to the supervisor. The Mannigan Smith Group is working on a five-year road plan. And in speaking with the supervisor, a minimum of 100,000 would be something that would be desirable to allocate because that is, we do a lot of road maintenance. But once we get the five-year plan, working with Mannigan Smith, we'll be able to allocate those monies more defined of the five-year road plan and working with the engineers at the township.
So there's not a separate account for roads?
Road will have a separate account.
We're responsible for it.
Right now, the road capital improvement fund has 116,524 dollars in it.
And just an FYI for, for this commission, the proposed roundabout at Jackman, the township has already spent 1.5 million. And the county has been told we won't spend any more money, period. We've already spent our piece and the rest is up to them. They said that we don't have to pay anymore at this point. The Secor Road, there's currently money deposited to the county of around $5 million to do the widening of Secor Road. So that's another big chunk of change because that started that we were going to potentially get maybe 2 million. And then it was going to be 3. And they kept pressing harder. And now there's actually $5 million. So it really about doubled in allocation as to what was originally started. Because I, I think the more they looked into it, they knew that project, it was not going to be done for $2 million or 2.5 million, so.
Well, what, what portions being widened or proposed to be what?
This is the whole Secor-Smith intersection area. And I think they're going to go as far as to the north as the the hill or the culvert area and south to the state line. Unfortunately, Toledo has already said so far that they're not going to do anything coming north up to the state line. But we'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Any other comments on roads? Okay, planning department. The plotter was acquired sometime in, I think it was actually before 2000. We have nursed that baby as long as we can.
Really? 25, almost 25 years?
Yeah, so we have really maintained it.
Wow.
Jody's learned how to fix it.
Put on our, Katrina and I put on our separate hats and we order parts and fix it. So estimated the original cost was approximately-
Is that an Epson dot matrix printer or something?
Get a crank handle on it. Get it going.
Wow, sorry.
Original cost was approximately about 10,000. I'm looking for 15,000. I have allocated out of my last two years of budgeting for 5,000 because I knew it was coming time that it was not going to last. So I'm asking for 5,000 for the planning department to be able to purchase a new plotter in 2024. I'm hoping to get at least 24 out of it and make it last till 2025. I'm very-
And I do believe that that was also one of the line items in ARPA, too.
I think it, I didn't know for sure if it was determined from the township board yet or not.
Pretty sure that was in that list of approved.
That's about all the equipment that the planning department has. Ordnance Department is going to have vehicles. They have a 2020 Explorer and a 2010 Crown Victoria. I believe the Crown vehicle is going to be, going to be gone, if I remember. And my, maybe Mr. Steiner can acknowledge some of these better because I know it was discussed at the township board meeting. Those vehicles are going to be replaced. And I believe that the building department got a new vehicle and his old truck is going to go to the ordinance department, from what I understood.
Correct. And Paul said he's, I don't know what meeting, but he's supposed to be bringing it to a meeting of any vehicles that we are going to divulge and divest ourselves of through, generally, we post them up for bids. If, if that doesn't work, we've tried to look at, you know, auction, which nobody wants because there's not enough value there, so nobody's going to come in and to auction those. So basically, when those, those vehicles go up, it's almost like you're going to take what, what you're going to get on bids. Either that or it's just going to sit back and be a mess or nickel and diamonds to death if we continue to use it.
So you'll see on this, I'm focusing right now on the 2020 Explorer, roughly lifespan of five years. So maybe by 2028, they may need a new vehicle. So I broke it down over '25, '26, '27, and '28 of $6,400. So this year of 2024, or assessing would need, or ordinance would not need no allocation until possibly next year. And maybe by then, they'll have a better idea of how long that vehicle will last and we can push it out another year if need be.
Well, and those vehicles are generally coming off the police department, so they're not new vehicles either.
Correct.
So, you know, coming off the police department, I mean, those vehicles get driven hard. It may last a year or two, it may last five years, it just depends. And, you know, some people say, oh, well, there's not a lot of miles on them, but it's still, it's the way they're driven, they're driven hard, they run constantly. So it just, again, it's just when that vehicle decides it's going to wear out.
So I, if the commission is comfortable, I'm good pushing that out to 2025 for a first-year allocation. If you desire to add it, we can. If 2025, we can always make a decision and change it.
Sounds reasonable to me.
It should get us through at least a good year, another year or so.
Yeah. And then on to the assessing department. They have one vehicle, a 2024 Explorer. And replacement year is about 2029. And again, I'm assuming probably the same, getting the vehicles from the sheriff's department. So we just took it as the same as the ordinance and assessed it out. And we did add this one in here because it is their only vehicle. But we can take it off for this year and escalate it out till 2029.
So Jody, the amount of 32,000, my initial reaction is that seems pretty low. Did we, or how, where'd that number come from? Just someone-
It's probably what we purchased it from, from the sheriff's department. I'm not sure.
Well, we own it though, from the sheriff. We already own it.
But I'm saying, well, we, I, I'm not sure. But I think that might have been the base cost of it before the sheriffs put all their equipment on it. I'm not sure. I did not, these were numbers that were provided to us.
Well, we, even though the sheriffs go, they do it through the sheriff's department, we still outfit it though. That cost still comes out of our pocket, but question, those things get removed from the vehicle. They were trying for a while, they could transfer it from vehicle to vehicle when it was Explorer to Explorer. But now the sheriff's department's starting to try to go away from Explorers, thinking they're not holding up well enough, so they're going to start looking at Tahos again.
And I'm good if we want to increase that replacement value? I mean, we can start there. And if we allocate it for now and then we feel we need to increase it, I'm sure the cost is more, more like 45 or 50,000.
Correct, that's what I was thinking.
I would say that. I think that we look at what the sheriff's have, sheriff department has available and then that's what's allocated. But I believe, I know maybe that Mr. Steiner can speak on it from the township board that there was some discussion about maybe trying to keep newer vehicles instead of going just with the town, with the vehicles from the sheriff's department because then they don't last and then we are then recouping and trying to, I mean, maybe he can speak on that from a township board meeting.
I was going to ask you, why do we own vehicles and not lease them? Is it because we could get good deals on a used car?
We go through the Michigan plan and we get basically a good deal on, on those in leasing them. I'd have to ask, but I bet you'd have a hard time leasing a police vehicle just because of the, the use of those vehicles. I mean, our insurance is tough enough to deal with, but to try to lease them, I don't, I don't think so because it's not being used under normal use. I mean, you got commercial vehicles, and again, this is still a little bit more, you know, hard use compared to even a commercial vehicle. So, I mean, it, it may be possible, but it's, it's never been done. And I, I don't know, that'd be something to-
You have to follow up, I was just curious, you know, why, why we wouldn't just throw these, take these off the list and keep them on an income statement so we don't have to worry about it?
I mean, it's not like they have high miles usually. Again, we, we need, the, the one thing we've talked about too is, as Ms. Rector said, is starting to rotate these vehicles out a little bit sooner from the police department while they are still in decent shape. Instead of just running it into the ground. Because they know a number of years, they, they really pushed the envelope as just how long they could last. They would get moved over here and a year later, we're nickel and dimeing ourselves. So, but again, there's been a lot of things done with the budget over the last six to eight years that has helped us work on that rotation, being able to better fund these police vehicles. I mean, obviously, they're not cheap, you know, 45, 50 grand per vehicle.
Do you know, has the township board looked at like a fleet, a fleet management company? Just to help with everything you just described? Like, you know, there's, there's companies out there, you know, that, that manage fleets of company vehicles and help you with maintenance and cycling them through and when to sell them, et cetera?
I, I can tell you most likely, no, I can't say that definitively. But I would, I don't think anybody's ever looked at a fleet management. I do know that we're, we're starting to see some better record-keeping on the vehicles. You know, because that's a very important piece of not just the police vehicles, but any of the vehicles. So.
Yeah, you can get GPS trackers now, you can put in, maintain all the maintenance records, right? They'll even send you notices that you need to have the oil changed, et cetera. Okay, sorry, Jody.
No, you're good. Any changes on this then? Are we going to keep it the same and just start allocating this year for it?
Sounds good.
I think you need to because honestly, I don't think that vehicle's going to make it to 2029.
Okay. Building department, you're going to see, has the vehicle. We have the old vehicle on here. And I do know that they just purchased a new one. Building department does have its own funding. We still would want to allocate for it, but I don't believe we need to start it this year. So I'm going to wait till I get the most recent updated information because I believe it's a 2023. And I believe it was 40-some thousand, so. And I believe that was purchased through the Michigan.
And the money's definitely coming out of the building department fund because they have, they have the funds to take care of it.
Right. So, but future, we may want to at least, we're not going to, we're not going to have to allocate for this year or next year, but at least think about it and keep it in the asset list. But I will get that information updated of the new vehicle.
I mean, you could talk to him a little bit. I, I think honestly, a vehicle like that, I think five years is a low projected lifespan. Because again, that's a vehicle that's not used hard.
Correct.
And granted, sometimes they'll go off, off the road if they have to go back out in, you know, agricultural property and stuff like that. But it's not like they're out there four-wheeling or they better not be.
Right. And it's maintains mostly in the community of building inspections and those types of things.
Right.
The next one is going to be the township boardroom. We have the server. It has, I know we've done a lot of updates to a lot of the equipment in the boardroom now. So we just did the update for the 2029 and the 2027. The other two items are out for 2020, 2033, for a lifespan of 10 years. The recording equipment is, was acquired around 2007, unknown for the original cost. Replacement year approximately 2027. So, we did allocate that out till 2027 of $12,500. So, we did allocate that for each year and if you desire to increase that to cover it, we can bump it over to a total of 26. The server was acquired in 2019, has a roughly a lifespan of 10 years. But beans of the costs, we did start allocating for it because if something does go wrong or we need something replaced or repaired and it's a larger cost, I would feel more comfortable if we take it out and have the money allocated for it already. So, we just allocated out the total cost up to 2029 of $3,750 to allocate and start allocating every year because it's something we need to have. We have to have the server for the township. So, we look at that average for the township boardroom of $16,250 allocated for this year. I don't believe there's anything for sound or visual equipment because we have updated majority of that this year. Any comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
Like 24, 25, 26, that's a running pool, correct?
Every year, that money will be allocated, so.
It may be set aside in a fund.
In the fund, yes.
So, no place, there's a show, how much has been allocated as we go along?
Well, right now, for 2024, will be what we allocate when it goes to the township board. In, when they approve the budget in June, $3,750 will be moved from the general fund and should the board approve it, and then it will go into the TRF of the Township Revolving Fund, allocated for the CIP. And then, say in 2029, we need to update or put in a new server. Every year, that $3,700 will have accumulated in the revolving fund and be there. So, we're not coming up with, say, $15,000 or $50,000 for the recording equipment all at once. It's, it's the idea of putting the money aside so when the funding is needed, we're not relying on it to be already in the general fund.
But with the totals per your chart, will there be like a subtotal there? Like, let's say if 1,000 a year was allocated, after you got 3,000, you're still asking for another 1,000. So, that, that year that shows like 3,000 in the fund, bank already, and you're asking for another 1,000? Would that show up anyplace?
Well, we can add that as an allocation, as a line item after we get determination from the township board of 2024. You're saying, I don't know if everybody quite understand, it took me a second.
What I'm understanding, I think it's a really good comment.
Yes, I do too.
How much has already been allocated?
Right.
The person that's looking at that, well, you know what? I have 10,000 sitting there.
Yes.
Maybe I can make 10,000 work.
Right, I agree. So, after we get a determination from, that's a good suggestion, absolutely. So, after we get a determination from the township board of what items will actually be allocated, we'll add another line item and we will show each item of how much money. So, next year, for this specific server, we'll do the 3,750 and then next year, we'll show the 3,750 plus the 3,750 of the allocation in the revolving fund for the server.
So, as an example, Jody, next year, right, so we're, when we sit and do this next year, we'll be talking about the 25.
Yes.
Budget, right? So, you could take the 24 column and call it already allocated.
Right.
And put a number in there, that's, it's already there. And then you're going to add six years, 25, 26, 27?
Yes.
That's a very, I like that.
Good idea.
It's not going to match the TRF account though, and that's where we have to make judgment calls.
Eventually, it should balance itself out.
Eventually.
Because we're going to have, once it goes to the township board now, we're going to be able to have that money that's already there and then the money we're allocating will be added. But until that someone requests the money, of course, it's going to be a revolving fund, that's why it's the township. If, say, I didn't need my plotter this year and I put in the other 5,000 and I don't need it next year, that money's still going to sit in there and I may say, okay, well, let's add 2,000 now because then I'm already saving for the next year if I need be. But it wouldn't be ranked as a desirable requirement. The money still in the revolving fund is going to grow whether we spend it or not.
And you could always push an allocation year out and zero one out and move it to the next year and move it on down.
And the monies can be moved if something comes of importance, you've got to remember that, that, say, say you put the 3,750 in for 2024 and you add the 3,750 for 2025, but then something happens to the recording equipment, well, that, how much, 3,750, 14, 15? That money could be moved to be able to be used for the recording equipment on top of the 12,500 that was already set aside. You can move the monies within what you're budgeting already allocated out if the monies are available in the revolving fund. Should the commission recommend it to be approved and the township board say yes, let's move forward with it. So, the monies can always be moved within the asset list, absolutely.
Are you going to create a summary page that takes all the top priority from every department and put it in one snapshot?
That's that spreadsheet that's in here.
Okay.
That's why I have to have an idea of what, why we're, what we're looking at. As long as we're saying these two items are going to be allocated for 2024, those two items are going to be added to this sheet to go in the CIP for the township board. They will get the entire asset list, but they will get this sheet broke down with what you're recommending for the year.
For 2024.
2024.
Good.
We have to keep them separate because then next year, these are going to have some 2024 items that are going to go to 2025 because they'll still need to be allocated. Okay, one, two, the clerks department. They have the shredder, which they maintain. It's a large shredder because it's for high security papers and they shred everything. And then the computers for all departments. 2017, lifespan of 10 years, original cost about 5,000, estimated about 5 to 10. 2027, approximately, we're going to need new ones. So, I budgeted out for 2,500, starting this year for those items. And then the computers, roughly 34,000, now they're up to 40,000. They last approximately five years, so estimated out 10,000 each year. Any questions on the clerks? Treasures department are pretty the same, straightforward. You'll see, they have the paper folder. I don't know if those are even possibly still available for them to purchase, but we did estimate it out and those would be something we would want to continue to add because who knows what the cost will be for doing tax bills. And the cutting machine is for the sewer bills. That averages at $2,200. I did not allocate for that and I did not include it, not over 5,000. If we need $2,200, we will just request it to the township board if they should need that replaced. You'll see, I didn't do any allocation for the safe. Those, we added it because it is an asset, but don't normally hear too many safes being needed and repaired or replaced. And the letter opener was only $2,500, so we left that off of allocation as well. So, averaging for the treasures department, roughly 2,000 a year, but I think for two things. I know a lot of times the drive up drawer, I think they just did some maintenance work on it, but that might be something they may need to replace in the future. I don't believe the supervisor has any assets listed within his department. And that is the last one. Any comments, questions, anything you want to look at again?
So, adding all those yellow items up and maybe that, you said a couple of these have their own funds or their own sources separately. Early on, you mentioned we have 320 something thousand in the TRF.
Adding those numbers averaging without the changes was around $707,850. That was including the sewer of the 200,000, the roads of 100,000. And then the township board will have to determine the allocation of those, of looking at those funds when it goes to that. I will say that Mr. Miller, the finance manager, did have intentions of coming, but he had a prior arrangement for tonight. So, I do believe he will be at the township board to be able to, when, especially when the budget season. And that's why I'm looking to get direction now because I'd like to get it to the township board before they start digging in deep to their budget. So, it will help them to have some idea. Of course, we're going to present what's on there unless you have any further changes of what was already shown as allocation of 2024. And once we get a better direction from the heads of the departments to say, well, I don't really need that, let's take that off the list. Then we'll have a better direction. But I think to get started and get a good plan, we need to get something to the township board for them to look at.
Just to clarify, because we talked about ratings and rankings today and it can be a little confusing. Just make sure we all, you know, are on the same page there. So, the rating, essential, desirable, acceptable. Essential, obviously, the priority is elevated. And then, okay, step down for desirable and, you know, it'd be a nice wish list item to be acceptable. So, that's the rating. But within each of those categories, you can also, the department heads can rank their projects. So, a department may have nothing but essential projects because of just, you know, things that are happening, et cetera. And they're going to have to rank those essential projects as one, two, three, four, five. And then they submit their project descriptions, all that good stuff, that will come to us and we need to look at that and say, we agree, disagree, et cetera. Hopefully, they come, talk to us, right? Department heads each year to walk through that.
And I will encourage them to come, especially if they have four or five projects that are essential and they've ranked them because the commission may have a different opinion of something and say, no, we think this might be more essential than that and let's figure out why we want to change it. So, I do, I will be encouraging them when, especially if they're going to make a request of something. But when they first rank them, it's definitely when they need to come. We can make decisions and if they don't agree with them, they can go to the township board and state their reasons of why. But it is more your job to give the direction to the township board.
Thank you. Any comments?
On your summary sheet, when you get all this put together? So, are you going to have, like, in groups such as top group, all essential? Second group, all desirable, and then third group, all acceptable? And then do the ranking on top of those separate groups? Is that how you're going to filter it out?
That won't be filtered when it goes to the township board because the department heads will not have done that and I.
But I'm saying eventually, is that?
Eventually, yes. You will have, each, each department head will have their sheet and what they have ranked and then we will show them as the rankings when they request it to you, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, because it only makes sense, you don't want to put something at this high ranking and expect it to get up here when it's a high ranking, but you've only got it in an acceptable rating.
Correct.
So, grouping it, then ranking.
Any additional comments? If not, we need to make a recommendation, right?
Absolutely.
So, looking for a motion.
And I would like to request any motion that is made for a recommendation to include any of, whether it has the changes we discussed at the meeting, to include those because the spreadsheets will be different from what I have on file to today's, of the changes we made.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mahoney.
I recommend that we, I propose that we recommend to the township board the CIP plan as Jody Rector has presented, including all the amendments and all the updates we've made today and anything she may make in the next day or two to update her spreadsheets.
So, your support? Support. Any further discussion, verification? Okay, Mr. Lampkowski, take the roll call, I'm sorry, take the vote, please.
Hey, Mahoney.
Aye.
Lampkowski is an aye. Steiner?
Aye.
Andrews?
Aye.
Brett?
Aye.
Helm?
Aye.
Crowe-Rott?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Before we move on, I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of the planning department, Katrina and Jody, Mr. Mahoney for being on the committee. What an effort, nice job, guys. That was, it's very streamlined, very logical. You know, it's going to take us all getting used to it and all the department heads getting used to it. And, but I think moving forward, that's going to be very useful for the board, for sure, to have that information. So, thank you.
And I just want to reiterate, thank you, Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Crowe-Rott for taking the time. Ms. Hirschberger and Mr. Miller as well, taking the time to come to those meetings because I thought they were very beneficial. And I also would like to continue to have those meetings at least once a month, even if it's just our small group to keep updating each other and the plan. And maybe those heads of departments can be involved in the smaller group if they are unable to attend a meeting as well. I appreciate, and I appreciate all the work everybody did tonight because it is a learning process for all of us and I think it is a good document to work off of. And I think once we can get the ratings and the rankings on there and we can actually see the smaller spreadsheet with just the items we're looking at, I think it will be a lot easier to move forward. Thank you all for your assistance and understanding through all of this as well.
Okay. Item number eight, new business. We have no new businesses this evening. Item number nine, public comment, still no one here. Item number 10, information, Jody.
I think it's March 8th, we will be having a meeting. I do have an item that is ready for a determination. So, we will be having a meeting on March 8th. I am working on doing the amendments and so is Katrina on the sign ordinance that we discussed last time. So, hopefully, we can get some discussion further on the sign ordinance. Other than that, I have nothing. Thank you again for discussion tonight and the input, and everyone have a great evening.
Thank you, Jody. We'll do commission staff comment, we'll just keep going, Katrina.
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Jody, I will be traveling on March 8th, so I will not be here that day. Yep. Other than that, I have nothing.
All set. So, last night at the township board, we made a recommendation. Ms. Rector brought forward the noise, or the noise ordinance, potential of having low volume music and speakers in some of the restaurant areas for outdoor patios. So, Ms. Rector did a fine job, she and Katrina. And I just want to say, I'll apologize to Katrina now because we probably don't mention Katrina enough. It's just that Jody, Jody does all the talking, right? So, but, believe me, when we say Jody, we mean Jody and Katrina. So, if we don't, if we don't specifically say it, because I know you put a lot of hard work in and Jody speaks highly of you. The township board last night also spoke very highly after, after Jody left about all the work that's been put in, especially on that ordinance and, you know, other ones too. But that will be coming to us. Jody's going to meet with Mr. Graham, he's going to sit down with, with the two of them. With all the changes, she made some good recommendations in there and they worked with the ordinance department as well. It's going to be one of those that this board might say all 100%. They may say, I don't know, we may be a split. It's just really hard to say. But I know that with the planning department and Mr. Goldsmith really on top of this because it, noise is hard to enforce. The other issue is, if it did pass, is how do you enforce it? Especially on evenings and weekends is when it would take place. So, from Memorial Day to Labor Day, Friday through Sunday is when it would be allowed if it goes through. So, we don't have ordinance at those times. What do you do? You have to turn it over to the police department. So, there's, there's a lot to be thought about. So, when that one does come across, really dig into that one. Again, I don't think you'll probably say a lot once planning and Mr. Goldsmith get through it, but look at that one really close. So, that's all for that one. Jody, you know, I know I was going to try to make the last CIP that you had during the day and, just real difficult. But when you do the next one, I'm going to, again, I'm going to try to make it. But a lot of hard work has gone into this, obviously, you can tell based on, and, you know, and Mr. Miller has become a real wizard with spreadsheets too. And honestly, I'm glad that, you know, because accountants have a different mentality, right? I'm glad he's got the mentality that he's got because he's got, like we said earlier, we've got ARPA fund, we've got the general fund, we've got the TRF fund, the CIP. So, we've got all these different funds that that person has to manage. And if, if they don't watch it closely, it'd be easy to make a mistake. And if, if they don't watch it closely, it'd be easy to make a mistake. He's got a really good handle on our overall township budget, and then drawing some of this in, and, you know, I'm sure Jody and Katrina could probably say even more, because they sit down with him on a regular basis. So, yeah, we can think, and, you know, if you would pass that along too, that this commission really thinks, you know, the finance as well. Because if we didn't have a good finance person, all of this would be so difficult to even think about. So, that's all.
Thank you.
And I got nothing. Have a great week.
Yep. Thanks, everyone. Be safe, have a good night, and unless there's any objections, meeting is adjourned.